I'd like to call our special city council meeting to order. And we are discussing the adoption of the 2021 certified tax rate for Kaysville City and the fiscal, the final fiscal year 2022 budget. Dean, would you like to say anything?
My question is...
Sure. Just to make it worth your while coming to this meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, we've been working on the budget for the last several months. About a month ago, we adopted the tentative budget. And the tentative budget includes an increase in property tax revenue. So the requirement is that we hold a truth in taxation hearing, which we did earlier tonight. So the action tonight will be to adopt the certified tax rate and the final fiscal year 2022 budget.
Thank you. All right. I do want to ask Councilmember Lorts to give us a primer on truth in taxation for anybody listening at home.
So Utah is, has basically mandated that the amount of property tax dollars that are collected each year remain the same unless a truth in taxation hearing is held, which means that the rate per the value of a home fluctuates based upon those fixed dollars. So if a city collects, let's just say a million dollars of taxes, the next year they can only collect a million dollars of taxes even if property values went up 20%, unless they hold this hearing, which then discusses what they're going to change that dollar collection amount, which translates into a tax certified tax rate, as Mr. Story indicated. So the two variable pieces in property taxes is the home valuation and the property tax rate. The fixed piece is really the amount you collect. And so that's what, as a city council, we determine what is the dollar amount we need to collect each year in property taxes to support the services of the city to the residents.
Great. Thank you. And we have been doing truth in taxation for the past four years so that we don't, because there is a ratchet effect, you know?
There's inflation.
There's inflation. Right. And so every, every year, we have been having truth in taxation. And the past three years, we have not increased the, the tax rate. It has remained steady. But the amount you pay has gone up a little bit because of the valuation of your homes. So, but the, the benefit of doing it this way is that it helps the city keep their nose above water. And you do not get ordinarily a massive tax increase because you have not collected enough revenue to meet your needs for a long period of time. So the, the point of having truth in taxation is to be very gradual, very careful about how much money you take in. And it's also an opportunity for citizens such as yourself to come and share your thoughts on how your money is being spent. So we have, it was posted that the, we were going to be increasing the tax rate by about 28%. Most of that is, so as you probably know, the ambulance services, paramedic services are now being, taken care of by cities here in Davis County instead of the county. And so the lion's share of the tax increase is to pay for those services. I want to make mention that we believe that our service is going to be better than what we have had with the county. And so the, the majority of this is to bring on six new employees. And there are also involved with this two new parks and rec individuals, as well as an engineer. So that is what is in front of us at this time. There's been a lot of discussion about how we could possibly tweak the numbers a little bit. And I believe that Councilmember Lorts has, has a suggestion on that. Do you want to present your, your idea?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes. So after working with staff and, and council members and trying to talk about what we could do, first, I want to say, Mayor, I appreciate the citizens that came out tonight and came out last week to the open house and provided and shared their feedback. We took it very seriously. And we have worked diligently to try to find ways to mitigate or reduce the tax increase. So in talking with Chief Erickson, the six additional paramedics, plus the related expenses for those paramedics is about $650,000 a year. But we don't have to staff those positions immediately. And so therefore, in talking with, with Dean, I believe that we have the ability to cover the one-time fixed costs in the first year tax allocation, such that we don't have to raise taxes as much to cover that. I also believe that there are some other adjustments we could make in the budget that would allow us to only raise taxes for the amount of the paramedics being the $650,000. As to the other positions, we were able to benefit from having increased sales tax collections last year, which don't appear to be dropping off at this point. And so we are planning for them to remain the same as they were last year, which would be able to allow us to cover the Parks and Rec Department employees without using property tax increases for them. And I believe that the city engineer, there is room within the budget of the departments to be able to accommodate either increasing outsourced services for city engineer services or for staff to determine if they want to hire a full-time city engineer. So I think that from my perspective, we can bring down the tax ask by about 30, 32% from what was proposed and move it down to $650,000 instead of $970,000.
All right. Okay. All right. So that was an alternate proposal that was brought by Councilmember Lorts. At this time, just general comments from our councilmembers. Councilmember Barber?
Oh, man.
Just push it.
Oh, there we go.
Okay. My, my feedback is on the, the needs requiring a property tax increase. Thank you to those that came out last Thursday to the, to the fire station. It's been spoken about a lot. Hopefully, everybody's really familiar with the need to move paramedic services to Kaysville. Councilmember Lorts did a really good job talking about the, the financial part. But from a logical and also an emotional perspective, I have, I've been really impressed that we have this opportunity to provide much better safety in, in the city. So that part's really great. And from my perspective, I feel like it's hard to argue with Councilmember Lorts' logic of we have a way to make, meet these needs in the city while not increasing taxes as much as have been proposed. And so the only thing I had was to make sure that in our 2023 year, which I will not be here, so the council that will be here, to make sure that our one-time expenses are planned for at the very beginning so that we're not proposing to keep funds from this property tax increase, that we have everything already planned out. But from that perspective, I think Councilmember Lorts' proposal is making sure we get really good value for the citizens.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Blackham?
I too was really struggling with that total tax increase of almost $970,000, somewhere around that, because there has been a lot of increases. There's been increases with the school district. There's been increases in water. There's been increases in power, you know, groceries or more. And so it, it was very difficult for me. And I felt like, you know, as a council, I could see that there was areas that we could use monies that were here that were not spent in order to lower that tax increase. I felt like, you know, personally, I thought there was an opportunity that we could have used the consulting engineer a lot more than we did. I didn't feel like we spent enough to justify another full-time employee. But if the city can find the money, okay. But, you know, I'd like to see him use the one that we have, the ability to use, who was a city engineer here for 30 years and is more than willing to come in here as, as much as they'll have him, as long as it's cost-effective and that. But to get the paramedic program here was just so important. I mean, it just needed to come to the fire departments. It was something that we needed to have here because it's just a better service for our citizens to have those paramedics in our station covering our people 24 hours a day, seven days a week, which we weren't, you know, I appreciate what the county had done. They took this on back in 1976, I believe. They were probably the only one that could do it at that time. But as the cities have grown, it's just, it's, it's a better service coming out of the fire stations and going into the cities. And, and I, you know, these, these things cost, you know? And fire departments are just a huge insurance company, basically. And they're expensive, but they're necessary. And getting that paramedic service here, to me, was just really important. But that's why I think it's really important that that tax that we're, that we're increasing pays for that service. And the other things we need to, to work out with the monies that we have within the budget, and so hopefully, we can reduce that tax increase that proposed about 30%.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Councilmember Tran?
I, I just wanted to, to add my comments and appreciation to the people that have really delved into this. I know when we, when we ask for money, I mean, as, as just a, just a household, as a company, we always look and see where can we save and why do we need to spend more? And I understand that that's a frustration where people are saying, why can't we just do with what we have? And a couple of things have happened within our city. You know, we've, we've had a lot of growth. We've had a lot of additional needs. And what I really appreciate is the fact that we were able to ask the different departments, hey, where can you cut? What can you do? Can you cross-train? Can you, you know, cross-utilize your employees? Can we do more with less? And, and, and they did. They went back and they looked at their budgets and they said, this is what we can do and this is what we've been suffering from. To Mike's point, for the city engineer, we have a consultant that we use. And a lot of times, the different departments that would utilize an engineering consultant, they do things on their own time. And they just, they, they spend the extra hours at work to make these decisions. And they try not to bill the consultant because we don't want to, to increase our budgets. And so they're trying to be as fiscally responsible as they can. I feel like it's important to be able to provide staff with the ability to maximize their talents and do what they're very good at and, and be able to hire people who, who are experts, who will come in and augment and make us more efficient as a government. So I'm really, really grateful and happy that we've been able to reduce the 900 spend down to 660. I did have a question about the, the one-time expenses. That happens in this fiscal year, right?
Correct.
Right. So there really won't be any overlap into 2022?
So, so if you look at it, in, in this fiscal year, fiscal 2022, beginning July 1st through next June, we're going to collect $650,000 of taxes, but we're not hiring the additional staff until next spring. So therefore, we're only going to spend about $150,000 for salaries in this fiscal year. And we can use the $500,000 to pay for the one-time expenses of a, a new vehicle, for some lodging and for equipment. And then next year, in fiscal 23, we'll collect $650,000, which will cover the full year's expenses for those paramedics. So that's how we're able to balance doing a smaller increase and covering the fixed expenses or the one-time expenses.
Okay. And I really appreciate the fact that we're looking at actual numbers. Dean does a great job at being very conservative and managing, managing the budgets well with the oversight from council. But it's really also helpful to be able to say, okay, truly, what can we do to make things work? And so, and that's happened. So as much as I, as a taxpayer, don't want to see my taxes increase either, believe me, things are getting expensive, and I know we're seeing it nationally as well, I really do feel good about the decisions being made right now in terms of doing everything we can to be responsible with city money. So I appreciate everybody. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Lorts?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one other comment I wanted to make. I know as, as a council, we've been focused on trying to look forward and really make sure we're preparing the city for the future. And as I've talked with staff, we have a lot of large projects and a lot of things that we're going to try to accomplish in the coming years. And we've been trying to set the city up for success with that. And I do believe that in talking with staff, they need, have an increased need for more engineering services to make sure all those projects can happen. And in the current, if we do it with just the current staffing, it's probably going to overwhelm some people. It means some projects may slip or not get the attention they need. And that could end up being a, a worse result for the city. And so I do believe we need to give the, the staff the ability to utilize the resources to make sure that we are effective and efficient with those projects and think forward so we're not having to delay projects that we actually could start sooner, because I am worried that inflation will keep going up for a while. And so everything that we delay will cost more in the future. And so anything we can get done sooner will cost us less. And so I, that's where I'd like to see that we, we give them the flexibility to be able to use all the resources available to them in the best way to manage what we need to do as a city.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams. Sorry.
You can call me the Councilmember Adams.
The?
Hey, Dean, do you feel like the, some of the things that Andre has presented, do you feel like we do have an opportunity to find funds to hire a city engineer? I mean, for me, I, you know, I am very passionate about seeing a city engineer here. I think that they're, I think that they, I've talked with a lot of staff that feel like the, the usefulness of having one outweighs the cost. I mean, it, it makes sense to have one. So what are your thoughts? I mean, while, while we're approving this, I guess, I would, I would feel more comfortable approving that, knowing that we can go back and pull a, that, remember that movie Dave, where the guy comes, the accountant comes in and saves all the money so they can save that program? Are you going to be able to go in and make the necessary cuts to go in and say, yes, we can hire a city engineer type of thing?
Over the last several months, we've had, over the last several weeks, we've had several discussions back and forth with Councilmember Lorts and reviewed the, the revenue and projections. And we think there is sufficient monies available to hire a city engineer if that's your choice as a, as a city council. Of course, going into the budget, our, our concern always is that we, we have a stable tax base. And property tax obviously is the most stable of all the taxes we collect. But with the proposal tonight, we think it's very doable. We think it could be handled with going into next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. And so then my comment would be that I, you know, my vote tonight would be that I would still highly suggest that that be something that we do and look into and whatever, whatever means are necessary to, to get the city engineer. I think it's important.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can I just clarify that the city engineer's in the budget? So adopting the budget as presented tonight will, and, you know, just so you know, Josh and Lyle have both prepared a job description, have gone over it, and they're ready to go. They're waiting tonight's about before they do.
Okay.
So that's all we need to do is just go ahead and hire.
Okay. Very good. All right. Any other comments?
The only comment that I would have is take your time hiring a city engineer. I, you know, in my experience, and because I do have an experience working for cities and know and about engineers, I realize that what Josh does is completely different than what Lyle does. Josh's still going to have to use his engineers and his people, and he's going to be the designated project manager for any project he does, regardless of whether the city has an engineer or not. I just, I just hate to see us not utilize a former engineer that was here for 30 years. And I would just highly suggest that you would look into that and use him as much as possible, if possible. I mean, you know, when we talked about the money we spent last year was about a quarter of what you would cost to get an engineer. And I understand, you know, but sometimes the answer to everything is not, let's just get more people and throw more money at it. Let's just be more efficient with it and be more efficient. And if I was Josh, when they came and asked me to do things that Lyle wants done as city engineer, I'd tell them no. Go get Andy to do it, because that's not in his wheelhouse. Or, and, and I hate to see an engineer in training, because if you do an engineer in training, that's really not a city engineer. That's something that Josh has to review everything he does and make sure that he would be willing to stamp it. And so that's why, if you're going to get a city engineer, get a city engineer that can stamp things and is a city engineer. Yes, it costs more, but you're getting a lot more for your money. So, you know, let's, let's take our time if that's what you want to do, and let's utilize Andy as much as possible. I know, I probably shouldn't say his name, I should C R S, but, but I've talked to him personally, and he said, you know what? I can be here as much as they ask me to be. I literally can work out of the city building for so many days a week if they're willing to do that and want to do a contract. And I've always said, to pay for that kind of kernel of knowledge that you get from a 30-year person will take you paying somebody else two or three extra days just to get what you need done in a few hours. So that's just the direction I hope the city staff will use when they're looking for this.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Councilmember Barber?
Josh, did you have a comment to that? I saw a, I was just, if you wanted, it seemed like you had a, you know, one of those...
Like your seat was on fire.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. I, the last three years since Andy retired have, have been very formative and very beneficial for me. When Andy retired, there was a lot of trepidation on my part to absorb a, a good portion of his responsibilities, as Lyle also did in absorbing his responsibilities. Andy was the community development director and, excuse me, and the city engineer. So as we carved out those responsibilities and have continued to work with Andy, it's provided tremendous access to his institutional knowledge, both the city in general, but myself. You know, Andy is, is kind of a mentor to me, and I, I have been really grateful for that opportunity. The last three years, I, I feel like we've been trying really hard to do just, just this, to utilize as much as we can outside help. And the portion, it's in that $20,000 to $30,000 range that we've been utilizing Andy for. And that, that portion is just for the plan review, the subdivision, kind of coordination review process, which is a, a small portion of what we'd be looking to do with the city engineer. That's just one piece of the puzzle, so to speak. The city engineer, it would be involved in other departments, mine, mine heavily, Lyle's heavily, but also support for, as you talked about, other departments that come and have engineering needs, rather than having to, to tell them no and to send them elsewhere to have that resource. And I, I feel like we've done a great job the last three years in identifying, like, okay, what can we do? Where are we struggling? And it's not just about, you know, not having to expend those dollars with a consultant. It's also about doing better with what we're currently doing, increasing the level of service, the amount of time that's spent getting something back to a developer or to a resident on something. But it's also about allowing Lyle and myself, I think I indicated previously, I do very little long-range strategic planning, looking down the road. It's, all right, let's start thinking about what we're doing next year, this summer. So I, I feel there's opportunities. Andy, outside of just the development portion that, that Lyle utilizes him for, I have three major projects that Andy's working on for me right now. And not at all a fault of his own, one of the projects that Councilman Lorts would be really familiar with up in his neck of the woods, I'm well over a month, almost two months behind where I want to be on getting the plan review done, because we are utilizing him heavily. Yeah, could Andy be utilized differently? I'm sure, but I, I feel like we've already met that bandwidth with him on what we can utilize. We're currently utilizing four different engineering companies right now on projects. I had to try and outsource that. So, yeah, I, I have appreciated the opportunity, even though when it first happened in 2018, like I said, very, very nervous about that. But it's been wonderful for myself, and I have appreciated the ability to try and outsource and, and get a better feel for what it is that we're doing, so.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have one last comment.
Yes.
I realize, I failed to include one, one thing as the Parks and Rec liaison to talk about the two Parks and Rec staff that we are hiring. We talked a lot about the city engineer, which is fantastic paramedics. This request has been coming for about, I wish Cole was here, about five years of needing this. Our needs have grown substantially. We, we have about 30% more park space and needs for them, and yet we have actually had less staff because we haven't been able to replace some. And we've been able, we've been having a harder time utilizing seasonal employees. And so it's been a request that just kept bumping up, and it was going to come to the point of what are we not going to be able to support anymore? So I'm really proud of this council for recognizing the needs of Parks and Rec Department. We had other departments that have had a lot of support the past few years, and so I'm just really thankful for, for that one. And if anybody has questions, we are happy to answer those. Thanks, Mayor.
All right. Okay. I think I would entertain a motion at this time.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adjust the certified tax rate to a level such that it raises $650,000 incremental to fiscal 21's collection, and that we adjust the final fiscal 22 budget to reflect such change.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Councilmember Lorts, seconded by Councilmember Blackham. Any questions, comments?
So that's, that is changing the rate, but adopting the budget as outlined in the package?
It's changing the budget to reflect the change in the tax collection assumption.
Okay.
But all of the, anyway.
Yeah. It will include city engineer and the two Parks and Rec.
Yes, the currently approved positions would still be there.
It currently does, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. All right. Any, any comments? Councilmember Adams?
I was ready to vote. Sorry.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. Let's go to vote. Councilmember Barber?
Aye.
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 And the motion is unanimous. Thank you very much. All right. Thank you. We will now close our special city council meeting.
Thank you.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn from the special city council meeting.
I'll move that we adjourn.
Second. It's been moved by Councilmember Lorts, seconded by Councilmember Tran. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And now, I would like to call our regular city council meeting for August 19th, 2021 to order. And we will begin with an opening provided for us by Councilmember Mike Blackham.
All right. For my opening tonight, I'd like to talk about somebody. I want to talk about John Adams and make a fool out of him is what I want to do. I'm not going to. So, Councilmember Adams, I should say.
That's fine.
Anyway, when you're growing up and you're a young kid, there are a few people that impress you and leave impressions upon you. Well, when I was younger, my dad was a pilot for the state of Utah, and he had the opportunity to fly the governor around. And so I used to get to go out to the hangar once in a while and hang out there, and I got the opportunity to meet Governor Calvin L. Rampton. And I just wanted to say a few things about him and some of the history about Governor Rampton. And Governor Rampton was, he held office in Utah for the governor from 1965 to 1977. He's the only three-term governor ever in the state of Utah. One of the things they talk about him is that with a low-key verbal delivery and a restrained platform appearance, he lacked charisma, but he was politically astute and apparently so impressed Utah's Republican Party leadership that they mounted only token opposition to him in 1968 and 1972. And he probably would have won a fourth term in 1976. Instead, he returned to private law practice, handpicked the Democratic candidate Scott Matheson, who you all know won very easily. So that's kind of an interesting thing. And then another couple little things about him, and then I'll, we'll move on, is he was actually the assistant, he was the, he was the Davis County Attorney from 1939 to 1941. actually the assistant, he was the Davis County Attorney from 1939 to 1941, and the Assistant Attorney General for Utah from 1941 to 1942. Then he went into the Army, into World War II, and was a veteran, then came back, was in private practice until 1964, when he decided to run for governor. So, and then there's one last really interesting thing about him. He was a graduate of Davis High. So if you all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Blackham. All right. Any conflicts of interest this evening?
No.
Nope. All right. We'll move on to our consent agenda. Anybody want to move our consent agenda?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve items A and B on the consent agenda.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Barber, seconded by Councilmember Tran. Any comments? All right, let's go to vote. Councilmember Blackham?
Aye.
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 Motion is unanimous. Thank you. Now, we're going on to our action items. An ordinance enacting Chapter 27 mixed-use zoning district overlay. Lyle?
Mayor and council, this item we've discussed over a couple meetings. I believe it's simply ready for passage. The text is as been before you previously. The only item I believe that's really of note this evening, unless you'd like me to go into any further detail, is the timing of the ordinance. So what's been prepared has an effective date. It's actually December 1st. So passing this tonight, it would still be a few months before it's on the books and able to be utilized. I'm not sure if that's the right date. That was my recommendation. Hopefully getting that in timing with about when we'll see the general plan, items wrap up, which I think is part of the interest of the council, so that one doesn't precede the other too much. So unless there are other questions, I think I'll highlight that.
I just, if Ryan's listening, our monitors aren't working.
That might be me.
Come on, Lyle. No pressure.
See how our staff is cross-trained? Look at how...
Yes.
That's what I'm saying. They've jumped to the task.
I've only got 20 cords here.
He's an IT guy as well. Yes, exactly.
I think I turned mine off in desperation.
I don't know. Does that do anything?
Not yet.
I will open the public hearing for this, except there's nobody signed up to speak to this item, so close the public hearing on that. And we will go to questions from council on this item. Any questions from council? We have been working on this for quite some time. Yeah. All right. Seeing then, I will entertain a motion at this time.
I'll make a motion that we, oh. I'll make a motion that we, let's see, where are we? A. Okay. That we approve the item A, an ordinance enacting Chapter 27 mixed-use zoning district overlay.
Second.
All right. It's been moved by Councilmember Tran, seconded by Councilmember Lorts. Any comments?
My comment is that I just appreciate all of the work that's gone into creating this and making it great. Planning Commission has looked at it over and over and over. We've looked at it. This has been a long time coming and something that we're excited to, at least I'm excited to see happen, so.
Absolutely. Okay. All right. Councilmember Lorts, anything?
I also echo that. I'm anxious to see how developers will utilize this opportunity to enhance our city and to revitalize areas, and perhaps improve some areas that currently, you know, may not look as good as we hoped they would be for the presentation of our city. But I'm very excited to see what it does for our city.
Excellent. All right. Councilmember Blackham?
This ordinance definitely makes me nervous. There's no question. I think I've pretty much shown that so far in the earlier meetings. But I'm just hoping that the developers out there understand what we're actually trying to get in Kaysville. I mean, the examples that we've all seen in other cities where we've seen this, and we're kind of hoping that somebody comes here with that type of a presentation and not just a box with residents on top. So I guess it's one of those things, it's a working, living document, and until we use it, we won't know how it works.
Anything else?
Mayor?
Councilmember Barber?
Oh, go. I would just say to residents listening that, like we said, we've worked on this for a very long time. We've taken a lot of effort, and Councilmember Blackham, I think was really helpful in making sure we're optimizing the underlying zone, so that things are more congruent with where they get put. We've limited the amount of residential that can be in a space. We've limited, maximized parking, limited height, and tried to make sure there's some consistency with the surrounding neighborhood. And so we didn't just say, yes, go build whatever you want. We really tried to give some really good examples of what we're looking for. And I would agree that we can adjust this ordinance as we need to. And I would also recommend that we, as a legislative body, remember that any time it's a rezone, we have broad discretion. You know, we can be really specific and make sure that zone fits the place that is being requested. This by no means means anybody that comes in asking for a mixed use has just absolutely come forward. So I think residents should feel a lot of confidence that we're going to proceed, but carefully with this. And I think the zone, or sorry, the ordinance for the zone is as good as it can be at this stage, until we have more experience and more time to learn. So, thank you to staff for working on it.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
I'd just like to say, if someone plans to bring in an In-N-Out Burger and put an apartment up top, I would be very happy.
Because you want that apartment?
I want that apartment. I want to live on top of an In-N-Out Burger.
Okay, very good. All right, let's go to a vote. Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
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 All right. Motion is unanimous. Thank you. Next, an ordinance adopting water conservation regulations. Nick? Is that you? Oh, or Josh? Either one.
Don't fight for it. Come on.
Mayor, we discussed this, members of the city council, we discussed this at our last meeting. Like Mr. Gibson said on the last one, I think at this point, we're just ready to, we recommend that the council just adopt it. I don't think we had any changes that we had to make based on comments last time, and so I think it's just ready for adoption.
Thank you. I don't have anybody signed up to speak to this in the public hearing, so we'll go on to any questions from council at this time. Any questions? All right. Seeing no questions, I will entertain a motion at this time.
I'll make the motion that we approve the ordinance adopting water, sorry, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Leighton City to trade water.
No, no, actually, it's...
Or B.
That's what I was looking for. Ordinance adopting water conservation regulations.
Regulations, that's it.
I was going back and forth on that one.
That motion dies.
That was a really good motion. Don't all second it at one time.
I thought, wait, I didn't know that we were supposed to second it, because she was saying all the other stuff.
Well, maybe we could combine, like, three motions in one.
All right. We have a...
Can I have a repeat of the motion?
Let's clean that up. All right. Well, I was waiting for someone else. I've motioned so much tonight. All right. I would like to make a motion that we approve Action Item 4B, an ordinance adopting water conservation regulations.
And I will second again.
Oh.
Very good. Okay. It's been moved by Councilmember Barber very eloquently.
Thank you. I agree.
And seconded by Councilmember Tran. Any comments? No. Okay, we're going to...
You can substitute a motion. I'm just kidding. Okay.
You what?
No.
Okay, Councilmember Tran?
Aye.
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 Okay. Motion is unanimous. Thank you. Okay, now we are going on to our work items. Introduction to an accessory dwelling unit ordinance. And Lyle, over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a few slides I'll show and just give some background on where we're at, and hopefully give a pretty good overview of what you're concerned tonight. And again, it's a work item, so we're looking for direction from the council based on the process so far of how you want to move it forward, if there's still things to work on or not, or if you're ready for an action agenda. You may remember, I believe it was this group, we considered accessory dwelling units roughly a year ago. It's been a little bit more than that. And at the time, the council determined that let's wait. We were aware that the state was working on some items in regards to that. And so we tabled at that time the ordinance that was proposed. Since then, in this last legislative session, the legislature has passed HB 82, which essentially mandates that internal accessory dwelling units be allowed within cities. But it requires that cities allow them. There are some allowances that we can do to restrict them a little bit, which I'll go over. Also, actually overrides homeowners association CCRs to make sure that they aren't restricting them as well. So there, and I'll highlight that there's going to be a couple components with this of what we have to do and what the options are within that, and then some of the discretionary that we've proposed at this point with the draft. So I think the council's aware, but just a quick overview, what is an accessory dwelling unit? Kind of two types, you can internal, so this shows a couple examples of what an internal accessory dwelling unit might be. Apologize to have all the visuals, and not your screen's working, but, you know, you might see something in a basement, or a loft, or an addition apartment, something that's connected to the main dwelling. And we'll talk about how the ordinance essentially says, if you're going to do that with the internal, the architecture and the look of the home, still have a single-family feel when people utilize a space like that. Also, there's a detached accessory dwelling unit, it's a different thing. So if you remember, the state says we have to allow for internal accessory dwelling units. We don't have to allow for these detached. So that is the discretionary option that I just want to make that key point on. You know, these are just some examples of what those could look like, how spaces changed from a garage, for example, into a living space. Maybe these are some of the prettier ones, but just different ways that people do it, over a garage, a granny flat, inside the home. Just some humor for you. You know, the lovely basement apartment, that's a dungeon. You know, someone trying to make a move is a separation between the mother-in-law and the backyard, and at least you're not in your parents' basement apartments, right? So the, anyway, with this, they accommodate a lot of different lifestyles and needs potentially. So this is just one graphic that, I came from the Wausau Front Regional Council, that kind of shows maybe how people would transition the use of an accessory dwelling unit. And so perhaps over here on the right in the green, you have a family who lives in the main house, they have kids, starting out, they have space in the back that, you know, whether it's attached or detached, somebody else could utilize as they grow, that actually occupy the entire area, until the kids grow up and move out, and it's just two of them, now they need less space, and so could rent out the main unit in this particular example. So it doesn't mean they're always going to be used that way, but just one kind of example. And I think that's been what we've heard from staff, as some of the interest from our residents as to why they are open to the idea, and as we've discussed, different housing types and options over the past couple years. Not a lot of people in Kaysville are interested in big apartment buildings, or a lot of density. This seemed to be something that rings true to a lot more Kaysville residents, is maybe this is a way that we could accommodate more growth by allowing these. And primarily, we hear interest in familial situations, which to a certain degree, we allow now. So you have college students or newlyweds that need a space to live for a while, and so they're looking for space to occupy. You may have a widow or widower that's got a lot of spare rooms that they used to have used with kids before, and now this could give them an option to use that. So we can talk a little bit about what our ordinance would currently allow, with any questions you have as well. But just kind of give you an example, these are very different cities than Kaysville, but these are just some big ones you recognize on an international basis as well, as to how many people take advantage of an ordinance like this. So it's a bit of guesswork, but I know there's some concern, if we allow this, is everybody going to do it, or are we going to double the population of the city overnight? And frankly, again, it's, we don't know. But here's some more local examples. How many units do they have? Again, this data's not current, so there may be more. But you'll see that in a big city like Salt Lake City or Provo, you know, they are limited in number. They do have some restrictions on where they're permitted in those cases. Farmington, that's close to us, has allowed for accessory dwelling units for quite some time. And speaking with their staff, it's not extremely frequent that they see people applying for them through their processes. I believe the number is about five or six a year that they see go through their planning commission for approval. So again, just, I could blow up here, and Laverkin?
Laverkin, don't forget about that.
I do have one question, Lyle. So those ADU numbers, does that represent internal and external ADUs, or is it specific to one type?
Yeah, these do not distinguish between types.
They don't differentiate, okay.
They're just additional.
Just an additional unit, yeah. Most cities, it's a little bit new, right? Not every city in the state has even allowed them. I'm not sure which one of these cities allow for internal and external. I would venture to say a lot of the times, it's an internal type unit. But I do know some allow for the external. And again, this is just an example, who's using the units. Just quickly go through, oftentimes a family member that lives there, but maybe about half and half, they're renting it out to somebody. This shows how popular they've become over time, so it's starting to flatten off. It's kind of had a trend, but it's still going there, so you will see that there's interest in creating these things. I probably don't need to preach this too much to the council, but part of what's bringing it and offering it is, okay, we've got these housing needs that are hitting, and, you know, a lot of this speaks to the affordability of a potential unit. To some degree, that's almost irrelevant, where the state's decided, you have to do it, right? So it's just a matter of how it looks to us at this point. So I won't dig into that a lot, but if you look at what some of the Kaysville residents have said, you know, there are some concerns with some of these units. That question five with the red bars, you know, generally speaking, what are people concerned about when it comes to new development? Traffic is by far number one. Traffic comes both with cars on the road, but also parking. I believe as people respond to that, and we do hear that occasionally in neighborhoods, that you've got cars spewing all over into the street, and they can't be contained within that. As well, you have, I'll flip my eyes here with you. Preserving open space is the bottom one, that's a little bit higher, and then the impact on schools. So if we have more people, more students in our schools, larger class sizes and so forth, so that rings with our residents as to what their concerns are. And then you can see there on the left, some of that, there are concerns with renters coming into these spaces. We'll speak to a little bit how that can be addressed, or what we've considered, and maybe just the look and feel and change that might have. And I've already spoken to this a little bit, but that just shows, by and large, people want to see single-family detached homes in Kaysville as we grow. So that's what those top numbers are, is if we're going to get new growth, let's do that. But if we have to have other options, this goes above townhomes or apartments and other potential choices. So this gets to the ordinance itself. So I'll highlight some of the key points, and again, hopefully you can cut in any time with any questions you have. The state legislature, again, requires that the internal accessory dwelling units be in place, and they are very specific about how cities can regulate them. And so we've chosen to implement all of their potential restrictions, with one exception. And I'll go into the exception perhaps first. So among other things, cities can choose to limit up to 25% of our residential areas, where we just don't allow accessory dwelling, and it's these internal. In conversation with the planning commission, we've chosen not to implement that, not knowing who to pick as the winners and losers of who gets to do it and who doesn't. So as proposed, it would be applicable citywide in a residential area. Maybe the key point up there on top is, as long as the property exceeds 6,000 square feet in size. And that 6,000 number comes from state statute, so we have to follow that. We could choose either to use it or not.[1721.45] to use it or not. If you're familiar with Kaseville, which you are, that's pretty much every house in Kaseville. We don't have very many that are smaller than that. So that's, again, that doesn't mean everyone will do it, but just to give you an idea of that potential, if you think we need to broach the 25% restriction because of that, that would be part of the conversation and direction we look for from you tonight. Property owners got to live on the property, so that's, you know, I think an important point of this. We chose to implement that. You know, the pictures before we had as the example, we're not necessarily specifying which unit they live in, but they do need to be on property. The unit will be connected, it's the same parcel, the same tax, utilities are going to be connected, whether, anyway, in this case. So that's one of the big differences between some of the things that we do now on our books. It is, you know, going to be connected, and you can't just subdivide and separate it and do a twin home type or other situation. And, sorry, I'm just going through the list here. Keep waiting for questions, but.
Oh, I've got questions.
Okay.
You're just doing such a good job.
Okay. You want me to wrap up or fire in?
No, it's up to you. I'll wait.
I think finish.
I'll polish up these three things then. No short-term rentals is something specific in here, so Airbnb, VRBO, that is something we designated. The planning commission actually had a fair amount of conversation on this particular point. They said, yeah, let's definitely not do it right now. Maybe that's something that we need to consider in the future, but it needs to come kind of in a bigger picture, more comprehensive look, as if we do it, where we do it, how we do it. It could be something that we could do a transient room tax on, monitor better license. So it could be a source of income for the city and regulate it in a different way if we choose to go that direction. But perhaps for tonight, just to keep playing, that those would be, are disallowed. We're proposing that anyone that's renting one of these units, obtain a license from the city, so we can track them, see how many we have. So again, you might have family that lives in the unit, in that case, perhaps they're paying rent, maybe not. So that might be something we have to work out. But I think this assumes a non-family connection using the unit, that we would track that. And then again, the big question is, the IADU is a permitted use, and that's the way the state law requires, so they can't take them through a conditional use process. Our ordinance has proposed would allow for a detached ADU. You have a choice of either or, but you cannot have both on the property. And the detached would go through a conditional use process with the planning commission for its approval. So that, you know, again, we're a little bit limited in some of the things we could talk about. I think the 25% could be a point of conversation, if that's of interest. Is the detached ADU something we want to take on at this point or not? And then the last point is just the timing. So we brought it straight from the planning commission to your meeting tonight, at least as a work item, because October 1st is an effective date for the state. So if we haven't implemented anything, the state goes into effect without those additional restrictions. And of course, we could be a week behind that, and you know, we can still implement something after the fact. But if we want to get ahead of that and make sure if there are ways that we want to be more restrictive, that we implement that before then. So we've got a little bit of time to work through this. And I think with that, I'd look, any questions, comments, feedback and direction for us, and how we want to move this forward.
Okay. We'll go to Councilmember Adams first.
Yeah. So are there any requirements for utilities, separate utilities?
Yeah, the way that we've established it is, they would not get a separate set of utilities for these. So whether it's attached or detached, they're running on the same meters, the same utilities.
Okay.
And we could, I suppose, separate that, but I think as staff, that's one distinction between a completely separate home or unit and kind of an ADU where there's a connection to that property owner who lives on site. So whatever feedback, whether we're caught on that, let us know.
Like mail, I mean, I'm just thinking about those, the things that will come into play, probably utilities, mail, you know, police knowing where people are, like you're saying, having to get that license. How, how can, how well can we regulate that? Is the state saying just essentially anybody that qualifies, anybody that has over the, qualifies under these four things we've set, can just do it without?
Pretty much. So they give us the option to get a little bit of oversight. And in fact, the state's kind of modified some building code things where they're saying, in effect, as I understand it, you've already inspected and looked at this home as a habitable space. And even though somebody's going to have an accessory unit, we can't require some of the separations that we have previously on a duplex, for example, with HVAC systems or fire separation and some of those items. So really, the state has said if they have a home, they've got more than 6,000 square feet of property, they get to have an accessory dwelling.
That's the only restriction that they have on their current thing. I mean, you're saying we've picked out of a list, the four of the five things, we took off the 25% one, but we've picked out of the list they gave us. But regardless, if we didn't do anything come October, anybody who has, that 6,000 square feet one was the only one that they regulated?
I think that's one of the most notable ones, but it's not the only, so I'll make you kink your head. But this, this is the actual bill. And so if we don't restrict anything at all, they just get to be on any home in town. So this is telling us where we can restrict it. So we can prohibit separate utilities, which we would choose to do. We can require that it maintain a single-family look and feel, so it's not a dramatic aesthetic change. We've put that into ours. There'd be a primary dwelling on site, an extra off-street parking. If parking's removed, that it'd be replaced. You can't go in a mobile home. They have to get a license.
Just real quick, while you talk about parking, like that's, I know that we have sort of a citywide thing, you have to be off the street during the winter so that plows can get by. For me, the parking has always been an issue, like on our street, if someone parks their work trailer, you know, on the corner, I just wait for someone to turn and hit a kid that's riding their bike down the road. You know what I mean? Like it just, there are certain streets where it doesn't make any sense to have parking on the curb unless you're just showing up, visiting and then leaving. And so, does this have any requirements that they have to be off the road? Have a space off the road?
Yeah, it does. And so that's something that we felt was appropriate to add into ours. So again, if we do nothing, they're not required to provide extra parking. But if we adopt this, we can say, you have to have, and it's pretty specific here, we can only require one additional parking space, and it is off-street parking.
I thought the bill was you could, they had to have one, but you could require more. I mean, they have to have one additional for the ADU.
And we could verify that. So Councilmember Laverkin's saying they have to have at least one, we could require above that.
That was one of the oppositions of the legislators that were there, saying you can't just park out in the street, you have to be able to provide an additional parking spot on-site. I believe the bill also says if you take out the garage to put the ADU, you have to replace the garage and the additional parking space.
And so we've added both, though. So we may be thinking the same thing. We could review that more clearly. And the idea is, yes, they need to provide space off the street for extra parking. I will say how this probably will work in practice, so our ordinance is required two parking spaces per dwelling in it. So think of every home in town, it doesn't say that that has to be in a garage. Generally, you have a driveway that could fit two cars and a garage that could fit at least two cars. Nearly every house in Kaseville has four parking spaces. So unless they are removing a garage parking situation to, anyway, turn it into an ADU type unit, an IADU, they're probably going to meet the parking requirement. And it's so specific that we can include one additional on-site parking space, we can replace those.
Can we, do you think we could make, and then, again, this is a work item, so everybody knows, like, would there be a way to make it so that the verbiage was that it has to be a non-obstructed parking space? Like, my thought is, if you, if you had two, if you, if you're counting the two in your garage and the two on your driveway, you could say, oh yeah, we have the space. But theoretically, the apartment tenant, or the tenant in there is never going to park in the driveway in front of the garage, because that's, you know, that, oh, you got to move your car, I'm here. And so they'll end up parking on the side, on the driveway, I mean, on the street.
On the street, yeah.
So if like, we require that they have to have like, a space that they can pull into and pull out of without being obstructed, does that make sense? Is that something?
Yeah. And we believe we can do that. In fact, that's what we've written into the ordinance, because you're spot on, Councilman, that's, I've seen that on a lot of them. So we've not only required that it can't be, I call it in tandem, it's got to be something that's not hidden behind another spot, but it also needs to be paved.
Well, and Lyle, because it's a conditional use permit, planning commission can require extra restrictions on parking.
Only if it's detached.
Wait, only for detached, okay.
Yeah.
I think that's where this gets scary, is like, if it's not detached, essentially, they can just do it. So we got to make sure that we have those things put in place right now, because there's not going to be any oversight on.
On an internal.
That's essentially what you're saying, right?
It's, yeah, it's after-the-fact type oversight on the permitted use in most cases.
I think that, that you have right there, that highlighted, I think that addresses it well.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Way to be so on top of it. Oh, we have that.
And we've done, you know, duplexes for years in Kaseville, or, you know, as the planning commission asked, because on our books now, you can have a two-family dwelling unit in our single-family zoning districts, as long as there aren't more than three within 500 feet of each other. And we do that through a conditional use process. And so we've, it's not identical. We have some similar experience where we have learned, you know, to Councilmember Adams' point, some things that we see regularly where, you know, we want to find a way that it's real reasonable parking, that's not going to conflict with another resident.
Is this just on detached, not internal ADUs?
No, it is.
So they're talking about internal?
You, well, this is the detached section. You may be correcting me, Councilmember Lawrence is that's, so we'll have to look. So I'm working with the attorney's office, because of how specific the state was on what we can do, we may have determined we could only get that creative on the detached rather than the internal.
Well, we're going to look into that, yeah, because I think that would be.
I think the bill requires you to require them the additional.
No, the additional space, but they're not saying that it can be in tandem.
Oh, yeah, they don't.
On internal, it just says additional. And again, maybe that's something, maybe that's being too picky, but I just, I think that that's a big problem when you have people parking on this.
Yeah.
I think we could certainly explore that further to see if we could apply it to the internal unit. So.
Yeah. We have a problem, I have four drivers in my house, and we're always doing the shuffle, you know? So.
The wet shuffle?
The wet shuffle, yeah, that's what we call it. So, yeah, that's definitely a problem when you have more than two drivers in a household.
But your neighbors appreciate that you're not parking on the, on the street.
The street?
On the street.
Anymore? Yes. I have a question about the 25% number that you, that you discussed. Is that citywide? Is that per neighborhood? Is that?
Yeah, so we would have to determine. So here's the language, it's essentially, a city may restrict ADUs in, or the creation of an ADU within a zoning district covering an area that is equivalent to 25% or less of the total area the municipality's on for those uses. I could dig my email and find it. We have determined what our percentage breakdown is of our zoning districts.
Okay.
And, I can show you a map, I think that's pretty telling.
So Lyle, while you're pulling that up, can I just say, when I was looking into this, I actually watched some of those discussions where they were presenting it, both at the legislature and then everyone trying to understand this. And the uses I saw for that 25% were cities that had a section of the city that maybe was already higher density.
Right.
Or already had some other like utility issues that couldn't support it. And they had some really good examples, I want to say Mill Creek, but I could be wrong, but had really good examples of this will not work over here, this would be detrimental to the city if we had it in these sections of the city. And I trust our staff and planning commission that's looked at it. We don't have any, at least that we, at this time, that where we're saying this would be detrimental to the city. So I think it's wise to not implement that and just have it a consistent zone throughout the whole city.
However, to your point, if, if over the course of the next couple of years, they find, wow, this is really not working in this area, we're finding a lot of traffic increase and yada yada, it's because everybody's doing, then we could restrict that area?
Yeah, we could.
It's not, like that, the options of the things that we can do aren't, you have to do it by October, or you can't do it at all?
Yeah, that's correct. The catch would be anybody who's implemented it prior to our new restriction would be grandfathered in under the old rules. So, yeah, if 20 people started doing it in an area, and that's the 20 people that it took us to determine it's a problem, they would get to continue under the vesting that they, when they started.
And I think that's fine. I mean, yeah, you wouldn't go in and tell them no, but I think that that, if you saw a trend over the next year.
Yeah, and then you could utilize what the legislature has made available, if we, if we felt a need. And I think that would just, that's just something the legislature...
Power keeps going out in this neighborhood, because.
Well, so my question to it was just that there are some areas in the city which definitely have higher density. They're tighter neighborhoods, they've got more people, got more cars. So I just wanted to make sure we don't have to make that decision now. We still have the flexibility of looking at that in the future and keeping, keeping those areas in mind.
Sure. And I'd be happy to provide additional data, you know, at future meetings, if you think you want at least to be open to that. I would say there are clearly some areas in town that have more units than others, and at least in very specific sites, most of those were the densities, they're townhome type units and things. Those particular lots aren't large enough to allow in any way currently, but perhaps the areas around it, maybe you choose to restrict it. So, yeah, if that is an area you're interested in researching further, we can get you some better data as to what those percentage breakdowns are.
Okay. I know my old neighborhood that we moved from, there, there are a lot more rentals than there used to be. And I know this wouldn't necessarily apply, because they're not owner-occupied properties, but that would be something I'd like to at least think about. Shane?
I just had a question too, Lyle. If you, if we, if we say it's not allowed in a certain zone, can you say it's not allowed in a certain zone in a certain part of the city, or is it not allowed in that zone citywide? Do you know the answer to that?
When we looked at it, and again, here's the text in F, within a zoning district covering an area equivalent to 25%, so I think you do have to be zone-specific, not just parts of a zone. However, you could probably have a, no accessory dwelling, you know, overlay zone and cover 25%. And so I think we could get creative if there were unique locations in the city that, you know, for example, that zoning map, half of the east side of Kaseville is R18, more than that, but maybe only portions of that district wouldn't make sense for that. So we would have to get creative on how we limit it.
Lyle, so tell me, tell me what the license process will be for somebody to do an ADU? Fees, application?
It's, in its infancy, I guess. We have discussed it and talked about it some, and within my department. I see it being similar to a business license type process is probably how we would handle it internally. Because we can't monitor a whole lot, we'd be looking at a set of plans on, do they have the parking space that's required? Is it a lot more than 6,000 square feet? Is it on a failing septic system? Or, you know, they're just, we would go through this checklist, does it meet those? Again, this is the case with the rental, yes, you can have it, approve it. So I don't see it being a significant fee, a $50 fee. We just simply track it, know the contact information, how to get hold of the owner and kind of monitor where the units are at. We would have to adopt, I think, a specific fee for this and get a specific program in place before we charge it. But that's roughly how I see it working.
Another question. So I know that there are internal ADUs right now that are being rented out.
No.
I know, I know. So is there some sort of an amnesty program for these individuals, these homeowners to come into compliance, as it were? That's something that we probably, I want to encourage that to happen.
That way that we can track them, because it's really important that we track them. We don't, we don't want to, I would not propose getting past utilities, past anything, fee, nothing, other than come in, I guess, pay your regular fee.
Just let us know.
Let us know, let's get a track, you know, so everybody's accounted for. Or maybe an incentive, I don't know.
See, I don't see people doing, I don't see people even doing the license. I mean, to be honest with you, I don't see anybody, if they, if they've paid attention at all, the state said you have, we're requiring the cities to do it, that the license part of it is something that we're adding as an addendum, right? We're picking out. So, yeah, and to be in compliance with the city, they would have to do that. But I see very few people doing it. I see, and no, I'm just being, trying to be real about it.
So what's their incentive?
But where I think you do come into, yeah, is A, give them an incentive, but also I think where you also, where this does raise a point is, is a neighbor, I mean, I think that's the only way you hear about it, oh, so-and-so's always parking on the street and they have someone living in their house. Well, this state bill says they can have someone living in their house, but maybe they aren't complying with the thing. And yes, you're right, they have not gotten a license, which we've told them to do. What do we do in those situations? What does the state say if someone starts an accessory dwelling unit? Accessory, Mike's told me it's not accessory, it's accessory.
I've heard it both ways.
And, and then find out that they don't have a parking spot. What's the state said? Do we, do we kill them, kick them out? I mean?
Yeah, they've, and I wish I were more versed on it right here for you at this, at this time, but, you know, I've been splottering it all night with you, so. They do have provisions for those who are in violation of the ordinance and how we can manage that as a city. So they outline, here's what you can do, city, to, when people are not complying. They do have provisions for those who are in violation of the ordinance and how we can manage that as a city. So they, they outline, here's what you can do, city, to, when people are not complying. Generally speaking, you know, there may be a fine or two for a short term, but as with most of our code enforcement, we just bring people into compliance and move forward. And if they just refuse, we can't get it, then we do have some, some means to do fines and, you know, outlines it here, the 14 days, a hundred dollars a day for each violation. So, you know, we can.
Yeah.
Encourage that they come in and do so, but I also believe you're right. That's, you know, we would do some outreach. We'd encourage them to come in. Hopefully, again, it's a rental situation for 50 bucks and you get to legitimately earn some income off your basement or whatever. It's a pretty good deal for them, but.
Now can advertise it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now you can advertise it.
Well, I think, I think the key is that the legislature passing this didn't just say free for all, everybody go do it. They're, they're recommending people, they come in, get a permit, you know, keep it within your city's requirement. So it's not just open to anyone.
I thought they weren't recommending, I thought that was something that we were picking.
Well, if you read the.
Oh, okay. I get you, yeah.
We picked it from their options.
From their options, yeah.
Yeah.
So you will probably have to come up with some letter though that we can send out that says, hey, we've been, it's been, someone has indicated that you may have an accessory dwelling unit. It's, you know, you're supposed to have a license. Here's what you need to do or something.
And, and adding this gives you a great reason to do it. You know, hey, we recently updated our ordinance. You're actually fine. We're not going to kick them out or ask you. We just want you to come into compliance and.
It's going to be kind of like, you know, all the pools that have swim lessons that don't have a license for it.
That never happens. I don't know what you're.
Not that that happens.
Mayor? I have, I have some comments. Okay, so as you all know, when we talked about this a year or so ago, I was pretty tightly against this. I said, the legislature is going to be doing something. Let's see what the legislature does. And there's a couple of key points that I want to bring out. You'll notice the bill only passed it being an interior accessory dwelling unit. It doesn't allow for exterior. The bill is only for an interior. And if you look at line 30 on the bill, will you put the bill up? It always talks about in a bill, the highlighted portions of the bill. And if you look at line 30, it says, prevents a homeowner's association from prohibiting the construction or rental of a certain accessory dwelling unit. Because a lot of us live in subdivisions and we have protective covenances. And if somebody, if they come to the city, we give them a license or they did it, and it was against the protected covenants, then the homeowner's association could sue them. They could put a lot of money down. And I didn't want neighbor against neighbor. I didn't want neighbors fighting against neighbors over this. So if you look at this, you'll see that this bill made it through with the fourth substitution. That means it took five times to get this bill through with all the changes. And it only includes an internal dwelling unit. We're talking about accessory dwelling units. What we're talking about here is you would be able to take your shed, your garages, barns, any outbuilding that meets the requirements of an accessory building and move somebody into it. I think most of the people who bought homes in Kaysville in their subdivisions did not plan on somebody moving into the neighbor's garage, the neighbor's shed, the neighbor's whatever. And if you really look at how the bill is written, any home, any manufactured home that was built after August of 1976 and carries a HUD sticker is considered a legal home, whether it's on a permanent foundation or not. So that would give me the ability that I could go into a manufactured home park, buy one of their homes, as long as it had a HUD sticker and was built before, after.
1970.
1976, August, and I could put that on any yard. I could put an accessory building in and you could use that as a manufactured, well, that manufactured home would now become an accessory dwelling unit. And you say, yeah, but most of the subdivisions say that you cannot have manufactured homes in their protected covenants. Well, if we allow accessory dwelling units that are outside, then we're saying we don't care about the homeowner's associations. Because the homeowner's associations say that there can only be one single family dwelling on every lot usually in their covenants. Now granted, this city doesn't enforce covenants, but I also don't think the city should pit neighbor against neighbor. And I think people, you know, if you have an internal accessory dwelling unit, and I think that's why the legislature struggled with this so much and made the restrictions. It says, as long as it's not changing the outside of the house, they're living inside the house, they're providing a parking space, they're really not bothering the neighbors. Okay? But you start putting them in these accessories outside, then really what you have is a two dwellings on one lot. I don't know how else to say it. You really have two dwellings on one lot. Because as long as you have provisions for sleeping, living, cooking, eating and sanitation, it's considered a dwelling unit. So I, I'm not for an ordinance that says you can put another dwelling on a lot that violates the protective covenant. You say, well, yeah, but in the old parts of town, they don't live in subdivisions. They live on deep lots. There are beats and bounds. So I would be able to buy one of those HUD homes, move it on to the backyard of all these deep lots back here, as long as I met the accessory building setbacks. And I would be able to move a family into that and call that an accessory dwelling unit. I don't know how that's not a two family dwelling lot. To me, that is. I'd like to see us just do what the legislature says for a while, see how it works, see if we get any complaints, see where we, the pitfalls are or where, how great it is or whatever. But I think at this point, we don't need to do more because it was obvious to me that they really struggled passing this bill. I'm surprised they didn't kill the bill. When, when you see something that has a fourth substitution, usually it's been killed. It didn't make it through the legislature. So, I personally, and, and I really, and I've gone out and I've asked people, I've gone out to neighbors and I says, are you okay with your neighbor moving somebody into their garage and provide another single? He says, no, I, I didn't buy into this subdivision thinking that my neighbor could move somebody into their garage. Or, or maybe I would have bought somewhere else. But I, I don't think Kaysville can fix this housing crisis all by itself. I think the internal accessory dwelling units, that's a legislature that says we have to do, let's try it, see how it works. But I don't think we need to go beyond that at this point because there's a lot of things that you could do that I don't think people would like. And I can't emphasize enough how the legislature made it a law that an owners' association cannot prohibit it. If I did the other way, the owners' association could prohibit it. They could come to the city, get a permit, do all that work. Then the owners' association would sue them for doing it and the owners' association would win. And then that person would come back to the city and say, but you told me it was okay. So I, I don't want to get in the middle of all that. So anyway, that, that's kind of where I'm at with it.
So, I mean, with Mike, oh, with Councilmember Blackham's, can I speak? With Councilmember Blackham's comments, though, the way we have it as it stands is that, is that the planning commission could approve X, outside.
Detached.
Detached accessory dwelling units, meaning it would never come to the city council. And I think if I'm hearing you correctly, Councilmember Blackham, is that by putting that in the hands of the six planning commission or however members, members are there at the time, you, in a sense, you pit neighbor against neighbor because it's, well, you did it for him, but you're not doing it for me type of thing. And so why do we need to put the detached section in our ordinance at all? Is that what you're asking? I mean, so we don't, we don't need to?
Correct. There's no obligation to, to have that as an option.
And it's, I mean, it is sad because I do think, I, I do think there is places where you, where it would make sense, right? And you, and you think like, oh, you know, some guy that lives on two acres and has a, you know, builds a garage in the back of his yard and he wants his kids to be able to live back there or whatever. But, and so that's where you'd say, well, maybe we should let the planning commission take it by case by case. But I also have the same fear as Councilmember Blackham that when you do that, it becomes a, you let them, you should let me, I mean, it, it might become just like how it is with most of our requests for businesses and homes or whatever, like they just all get approved.
Well, and my feeling is if it's that big a need for it and it's that important, then let, then go to your legislator, get your legislator to put it through as a law. I would rather see it that way, the way this one was done.
No, I disagree because I think it is overstepping the bounds. I think our state legislature is taking over our authority as a governing body when they do that. And so I prefer to do the dirty work right here and, and craft something that is specific to Kaysville and not give, you know, not push it up to the legislature. We know our community, they don't. We should craft something that fits Kaysville.
I think the legislature understood though that they had the authority to make a law out of it so that they didn't have a lawsuit every time somebody did one.
Yeah. Well, if I could also.
That was.
Yeah. And as, as the slides showed, very few people take this step. Like in Portland, Oregon and Seattle, 1% of the households do an accessory dwelling unit.
And blatant, there's.
And is very dense there, right? So I have to believe that there is not going to be a whole lot of, there aren't going to be lots of people clamoring to put in accessory dwelling units here in Kaysville.
Well, I, you know, and I disagree because I think with the large lots we have, that as soon as people figure out that they can maybe go buy a used manufactured home and put it in their backyard and get $1,300 a month.
So we can write an ordinance that says no manufactured homes.
So, yeah, in, in, in the external, in the external dwelling units, because like, yeah, I mean, that's interesting fact. Like, are you saying it has to have been there beforehand? Like, say I wanted my house, for example, half acre, just under a half acre, dang it. But, and I have a huge driveway on the side, so I could theoretically build a pretty big garage back behind, next to where my driveway is back behind my house. Could I build that though? And, and have it be an accessory dwelling unit? Or do I have to get a permit for it to be such, like to put in a, a sink and a, and a kitchen and things like that? Like, I guess, could, could people just go out and start building those without permits and?
The, the way that it's, yeah, the way it's written up is.
Do you understand what I'm saying? Like, I guess I'm just wondering, how many, how, could you just go start building?
Well, I'll throw a couple of options for you and then I'll hopefully address that question. So I think the council could simply say detached, no, we're not interested in that right now. That's perfectly fine with the, what the state's required. You could say yes, as it's currently written and I'll talk about it, which is very open. Councilmember Blackham astutely noticed that whatever accessory structures you can build now. So we regulate size and placement of accessory structures and with those same rules, somebody could live in it or it could go for your RV or tool shed, right? So. Or you could have unique restrictions because the state hasn't limited us on what we could do on a detached structure. Or we could say only on lots three acres or larger and only a single story and you have to paint it purple. But we could create a, a complete, unique set of rules for these units if that's, you know, that's a third route frankly. So you have all those to consider. The way it's set up now, directly to your question, is if you wanted to do a detached unit, you would have to go before the planning commission. So you're going to show them a site plan, what it's going to look like, where it's going to be on the property. A conditional use doesn't give them the kind of discretion that you see a lot on things that come before you. They're really looking at, are there specific impacts that come from that that they can mitigate? If not, they pretty much have to approve those. So just anticipate, if you're going to say it's going to happen, everybody's going to get it that comes and asks for it. It's just going to be, you know, maybe plant a row of bushes between you and the neighbor so you're not affecting their privacy or.
Yeah.
I don't know. But that's the type of stuff they're looking at rather than a yes or no, you get to have it decision. So I think it's important to know. But they would see it first and then it would have to come before us as a building permit. It's a new building in this case, or even if it's a remodel of an existing garage, we would have to look at it as a, okay, somebody can now live in it now. Is it meeting building code standards to be inhabited by a person? And so we would permit every single one of them through a building permit process. And that's one interest from a staff level where, you know, we've heard the comments, we're not aware of everyone, we're not ignorant to the fact that people might be doing similar things currently. But we're not able to look at things that appear to be a potential unit and say, hey, let's bring this up to a certain code because it looks like somebody's going to live in there at some point.
Why not? Why aren't you able to do that right now?
Because we can't allow them to live in it. So we can't require.
I guess, and you can't say, you can't have this nice kitchen and toilet and bedroom and.
A lot of people might call them canning kitchen.
So, so I could go, I could build a 3,000 square foot home in my backyard and as long as it doesn't have its own heating and its own.
It could have a kitchen and bathroom in it today.
As long as it doesn't have its own utilities, I can call it.
As long as you are not renting it.
Yeah.
You could build that. You could build that.
No, but, but I'm saying then I could rent it under this thing.
Under this ordinance.
And it could be, it could basically be, I've split my property in half.
You've become an R2.
Here is my.
That's where I'm like, wow, that's pretty wild.
But that's, that actually is why.
Extreme, but at the same time, if someone was smart, then maybe would.
It's not extreme because we see them all the time in the cities. I could, any of us could give you a big list of where we go. That's why I'm saying, let's take the opportunity to say there's a need. These are happening in the city. Let's allow them to be done well. Come before the planning commission, talk it through, see if it fits, get feedback, and then we have an ordinance for it rather than, well, just don't tell us what's really happening in there. Because I, I don't think we're really going to change the trajectory of what's happening in the city. I really don't. I think we're just having an opportunity to have some impact on how it's done.
Well, for an external though, I mean, they'd have to get a building permit. They'd have to go through that whole process. So they couldn't just mysteriously build it, put people in there and not tell us, right? So what I, I, I'm not in favor of waiting for the state legislature to tell us to do this because I believe in smaller government, you know, let cities just determine what's best for our city. I do agree with that. I'm glad this is a, is a work item. I think that there's a need for this type of housing and I think that it will come before us and it's important for us to get in front of it and be very specific on what we'll allow. So I think if we are concerned about things moving forward, we should really narrow this down, really make it restrictive so that we can control what happens and what comes. So I'd be in favor of that, putting more restrictions in it.
On the detached though.
On the detached, yeah, on the detached. The, the only thing that we can really influence and impact at this point in time because we've been told what to do by the state on the internal. So.
If you support detached and you don't think there's that many of them that are going to come in there, then why don't they just come and get a rezone for an R2 or get a conditional use to put two dwellings on a single lot? It's already permitted in our ordinance.
I think.
I understand what you're saying.
Because there's two different purposes here, right? So, so the way I'm looking at it is, so if you, an accessory dwelling unit is like, um, my granny pod. Or it's not two households. It's actually my household with a buffer, you know, it's mother-in-law lives out here and we can take care of her and not spend a ton of money on assisted living. And it's better for her, you know, but we're still kind of a household, but it just gives them more privacy. That's how I think of an accessory dwelling unit. Now, when it comes to short-term rentals and, and renting out the space and I, I think that's going to be a different conversation.
If that's the intention of an external EDU is a family member to live there, extended family, yeah, we, we could write into the ordinance that that is all that's allowed, right? It's not allowed to be used as a rental. We could do that, right?
With the detached.
I mean, not, not that people won't do it. And, you know, we, we were looking at homes for our kids, with our kids for like the last year and a half. And I would say 99% of the homes in Kaysville that they're looking at, and they are older homes, all had rentals, had renters. And they're not separately metered, illegal rentals. And the agent would just say, yeah, so they've got renters, but you don't have to, but you could, you know, so it does happen for sure internally. I'm just thinking in front of, getting in front of an external situation. If we don't want them to be rentals, we don't have to allow that, right? And, and of course it could still happen. There'd have to be some neighbor. And, and of course, it could still happen. There'd have to be some neighbor reinforcement, I guess.
That was one of the points that Lyle had in there, was about, you know, who it could be rented to. We could get more specific on there. That's a good idea.
Would anybody be opposed to us moving the, all the work that Lyle's done to an action item of just internal ADUs with the, with the four that you've chosen, the four requirements that you've chosen for the internal ADUs, adding to the internal ADUs that there, if we can, that there not be the cars that be parked tandem? And, and deal with the external ADUs on a future work item as a separate deal? I mean, does everybody feel like that we, because to me, the external ADU, it, there's a lot of gray area, and we're going to need to work and work and work on it.
And we're kind of under a time...
Yeah, and the other...
We have until clear.
We have till October.
We have to have October 1st. That's not a long time, for sure. But it's two meetings, we have two meetings.
I would feel comfortable doing that, moving that forward to an action item. I think all of us understand that it's a state mandated thing, but, but not doing something fast on the external.
Yeah, and there's no reason we can't go that route, and maybe just for clarity, the, not, no in tandem parking or whatever made sense. Is there any interest in the 25% restriction on the internal?
I don't think so.
So that is very easy for us to bring the internals before you as an action item, if that's the motion.
Is that an official motion?
That would be, yeah, I'll make a motion that we do what I just said.
Hey, you got to clean that up.
Yeah, sorry. I'll make a substitute motion, the counter motion. No, I, the motion, I think you understand, is that we, is that we limit, that we only move forward with the internal section, that we add the things that we've talked about, the tandem, and, and that we see that as an action item, that we remove all of the detached ADU language and elements of the ordinance and save that for a later work item.
Seconded. I'll second that.
Okay. It's been moved by Councilmember Adams, seconded by Councilmember Blackham. Comments at this time?
I have a comment.
Yes.
I, I support that motion. But I will say, I personally think we need to quickly move on what we're doing with the detached. I just think there is a significant need in the city, there, they are going to keep happening. And so I would love to see, you know, next meeting, we, we approve it. We're good with the legislature for the internal. But I, I will keep petitioning that we address the additional, or accessory detached, whatever you want to call it, detached dwelling units. I think it's a need in the city. I get emailed all the time, asked about it. I emotionally feel like it is a good use for allowing people to take care of their families on their property. I think it can be tastefully done. I love that it goes before planning commission. I, I will continue to advocate that we, we don't kick it down the curb, we do something with it.
Can I just ask one question for the motion and that? Do we have any specific guidance for staff as far as the restrictions we want to see on detached ADUs to come forward with that? I mean, from what I'm hearing, manufactured homes may be a very concerning component.
It's a boogeyman.
Do we want to have a percentage limitation within a, within a space limitation, like we do with the current double homes and...
I think so.
I mean, I'm just thinking, we need to give Lyle something more than just...
So they can come back, yeah, informed, done that, yeah.
Another shot.
Yeah. Let's put in more requirements or restrictions.
Where did the attorney go?
Maybe he has some personal...
Going to the restroom.
Because I need, I need him, well, Shane, because of the federal HUD sticker requirement, I don't think a city has the ability to limit manufactured homes. And I need the attorney, the attorney needs to look that up.
I don't like that idea, even if it is legal. I don't feel comfortable with it.
But, yeah, and, and I don't know if there's a way to find out how these are going to be used and then write around it. Does that make sense? Like, look, as we look at like the grand scope of Kaysville, we look and say, okay, we should be planning this. So this is all part of the master plan. Like, in, in an area where a bunch of people who have bought homes on half-acre lots, generally, they're not going to be too tickled if someone next to them builds a giant second home behind.
But right now, they're building giant second garages.
Yeah, do we, do we want to limit the amount of square footage that you could have in a detached ADU? Do you want to limit...
That's what I'm saying. Like, you've got to look at all the different angles of this and see, like, does that make sense?
I guess, for me, what I would just recommend, Lyle, is that if you can look at some of the restrictions in other jurisdictions that might make sense to help us control that. I'm supportive of detached ADU, but I would like to see it more managed and controlled than just whatever. And hopefully have some restrictions that it's not going to, you know, start every detached garage in the city is going to be converted in the next, you know, six months, but I know that won't happen.
Well, the restriction should be such in place that the planning commission sees it, and they can easily say, this does not meet this, this list. Like, right now, the way we have it in here, it would, like you said, it's pretty much,
perfunctory.
we would approve everything type of thing. And so I think that it needs to have, and that's protecting them.
Yeah, we can absolutely, we'll do a lot of research, get some options, things that people are restricted. We'll find out about the manufactured home sticker. And I'm also curious, I think, to comment, we may not have the same conflict with HOAs as they do on the internals. So we'll have to look at that with our legal department. It might be that they're still able to say, yeah, you get the basement apartment, but sorry, you don't get the detached, right? So I don't know if that changes anything, but that could come into play as to how frequent these are going to be used.
Well, should we make sure that's reinforced in our ordinance? We do that if the HOI restricts it.
But wasn't that what, that legal thing that Mike was saying, that the part of the...
Well, yes, and it's all words, right? It says certain accessory dwelling, and it's, I don't know if that's referring specifically to the IADUs or all. So that's what we'll look at.
I think that, especially for detached, I think just having some info on what the homeowners' association could do. I'm with you.
Interior accessory dwelling unit.
Well, and the other thing is, if, if HOAs can prohibit that, that, that totally changes, I think, what happens in Kaysville. Because we've got lots of older neighborhoods that are not protected by HOAs.
Right.
That...
And then maybe one, I've got good direction, I don't know if I'm interrupting a motion, so I'm here if I need to cut up.
Oh, we've already...
I think that Councilmember Adams made the question, how will these be used? And this is anecdotal, I don't know this for certain, right? But we, we do get a lot of interest, and I'll grant it, it's one-sided, from people who would like to do the detached, probably on a weekly basis, if not more, at our office and have for a couple of years. On can I put my mother-in-law or my kid in, over my garage, or different things? I don't know what the neighbor's perspective is about it, but I know there are a lot of people who would love to be able to do this. And in almost every situation, it's a family situation, trying to take care of their own. So perhaps we could craft it maybe in that way to make sure there's a relationship between the two. So I think that would accommodate 95-plus percent of the interest that I've ever heard on detached.
I think there's ways to do it so that you can say, like, it has to be a single story. Like, just look at every angle of what people wouldn't want...
To live next to.
To live next to, and then figure out a way so that the people who want to do it be like, okay, if I want to do this, I have to do it this way. I can't just build a pool house. Anyway, thank you, Adam.
All right. Great discussion. We've had a motion, a second, and now we're going to go to a vote. And it starts with Councilmember Lorts.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Lyle, and thank you, Planning Commission as well, for their work on this. All right, now we're going to public comment. We do not have anybody signed up for a call to the public. So we'll go to Councilmember Reports. Anybody have anything to make mention of for Councilmember Reports? Councilmember Tran?
I just wanted to see, can we still plug Kaysville University, or is it too late? I participated in Kaysville University a couple of years ago. It was such a fantastic opportunity to find out what actually happens in Kaysville City. Being able to meet with the department heads, they go through their department, they explain what they do. It started tonight. Tonight was the first meeting. There were just a handful of people. So I just want to encourage people who are at all interested in, in the city to participate in that because it really opened my eyes to how busy everybody is that works for the city. And just, I, I just didn't understand what departments were in charge of, and it helped me to really understand the organization. So it was a fantastic program. I'm sure it'll be fantastic this time around. I hope people email you. Yeah.
Any other updates? Okay. City manager, any?
Sorry, thanks. Anne Marie reminded me that we have a meeting Tuesday at 5:30. Is that on your radar for the Canvas? It should be just really short, but that's when we have to do it, in the timeframe we're given, so. Do you have to cancel all your Tuesday night plans?
We can't do that tonight?
It can be a very quick meeting, of course, it's up to you, but that's the only thing on the agenda.
Can we do it like at nine o'clock in the night?
Does it have to be at 5:30? Could it be during the day?
I think we've noticed it.
Yeah, now, this time it needs to be at 5:30, but if you want to be at a different time...
Okay, we'll discuss later on the time. Okay, very good.
Is he done? I think he's got more. Come on, I want more.
More stuff?
Yeah, I want to know about this crossing. Where are we next? What's next?
Well, I emailed about it yesterday. Nothing's changed since then. But I would put that, I would take any comments you have on the letter, if that's something you want to do, and I would put it on the next, maybe consent on the next agenda. And, yeah, if you have any comments, let me know.
Okay, very good. All right. At this time, we, I would accept a motion to move into closed session. Make a, oh, yeah. Make a motion, oh. Make a motion to move into a closed session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you for coming, everybody.
Riveting, right? Riveting.
I feel like it was very interesting.
No, it wasn't interesting. I'm teasing.